If I can have everyone's attention, I'd like to call the February 20th meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order and welcome everyone that's here. If we'll all rise, we'll have our invocation and pledge with Dr. Evans.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight, we thank you for a day that we have been reminded that spring is coming. We thank you for the warmer weather. We thank you for the sunshine and we thank you for the wonderful opportunities that you give us each day just to be thankful for the opportunity to live on this earth. Father, we thank you for students throughout our school system, our teachers who spend so many hours working with them and providing educational opportunities. We ask for their safety each day and we ask for good learning throughout the year. Father, we thank you for our community that continues to support education and we just value that and we ask that you would guide us as our Board of Education meets tonight to ponder important decisions that impact the future of our school system and the lives of each one of our students. We pray each day for our student's safety and Father, we do remember the family of the student that we lost this week and we ask that you would just provide your grace and your comfort to them and help us to be able to be friends as we minister during this time of their need. Thank you for this country. We thank you for this country that's defended by men and women all over the world that ensures that we have the freedoms to not only to participate in saying our Pledge of Allegiance and recognizing the greatness of our country, but also the freedom that we can have education to take place each day and that our children can feel safe and secure in their environments. We ask you again to be with us this evening and we pray this in thy name. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have before us an agenda. Are there any modifications or amendments before we approve?
Yes, I'd like to add under the discussion items, our plans for making up our snow days.
Okay.
A second.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda then?
So moved. Second.
A motion by Nancy and a second by Kristen. All in favor? Unanimous? All righty, now the best part of the day is the recognitions.
This is the best part of the day. I'm excited to be able to present awards tonight and recognitions and our first recognition is for the Reach Employee of the Month and this month we are highlighting our school food and nutrition program and I'm very excited to be able to award Ms. Kristen Wilczuk, I hope I said that correctly, with this award. Kristen, if you'll walk around this way, around the back and I'm going to say some things that your colleagues and students at South Forsyth had to say about you. Some of her colleagues and coworkers said, "She is a hard worker. She knows how to get the job done." Another said, "I work in a self-contained autism class and our students work in the cafeteria with her. She is so kind to our students." Another one said, "She is truly someone who deserves to be recognized for all she does for us and the students of this school every day." Students actually commented and said, "She is the most amazing lady I know. Every time I walk in the lunchroom, she yells my name and comes up to me smiling and asks how my day is going." Another student says, "She sings while she's working and brings up the mood in the cafeteria. She is one of the coolest lunch ladies in Forsyth County." So congratulations, Kristen. Great job. (Applause). And I'll lay across here and shake everybody's hand. We want to thank Jim and Nick's for supporting our Reach Employee of the Month.
Yeah.
High school. That's not me.
No. I love the lady.
That's all you do.
And while she's going down, all those folks that are here to support Kristen tonight, if you'll stand up so that we can recognize you, family and colleagues. Great job. Very good. And now I'm going to introduce Dr. Tim Clark and he's going to tell us about our superior spotlight tonight.
Okay, so tonight, we're going to share with you a little bit of information about the tech fair and some of our first place winners are here with us too to share their projects. So the tech fair actually began, Georgia's tech fair began in Forsyth County in 2001. We were the first region to host a tech fair and then the next year in 2002, Georgia began having the Georgia State Tech Fair. So now, we had over 200 students participate in the tech fair on January 25th and over 35 students gave up their, these 200 students gave up their Saturday in much more time than that, working on their projects and now we have 35 students going to make it on March 8th to participate in the Georgia Regional Tech Fair. So I'm going to invite up, we have from Whitlow, Noah and Wesley and they're going to share their project and Meganah and Zach are going to share theirs in just a minute. You can come over here. So we'll start with you, present to the board.
My name is Noah Wetz.
And I'm Wesley McGee and we're both fifth graders from Whitlow Elementary School.
In third grade, we decided to try to enter tech fair. We entered a category called digital video editing. We entered this category and, and we made a movie with iMovie of us doing a lot of science experiments. We had a lot of fun doing this, but we decided to try to do something more complicated.
The next year in fourth grade, we decided to start doing 3D modeling. That year, we made a one-story house, which you can see right up there and we also had a lot of fun doing that and even though it was very complicated to do, we still wanted to get a little bit more complicated in fifth grade the next year.
So this year, we decided to create a scientific corporate building, which was much more complicated because it was two stories and we had to learn lots of new things about the software so that, so that we could create the two-story tall building.
We've had a lot of doing, fun with tech fair and we've also placed a lot in, in third grade, we placed the third place with our movie and then the next year in fourth grade, we placed first in the county and then we went up to state and also won first there. And then this year, we won first in the county level and we're hoping to do well in state on March 8th.
Well, I would think so. Yeah.
This is the inside of this year's model.
Wow.
You can see our, our upstairs and our downstairs of this year's model.
So you learned the construction, John, all the words that you used and everything. I had to draw a, a model of a house in college and it was the most fun thing I ever did. That's just great. I would love something like that. It's great.
So if we need to build a house, you can design us one.
Right, right.
Or a school.
Or a school.
Just saying. Well, good luck, guys.
Yeah, good luck. We hope you win. You should win.
Thank you for letting us.
We'll see you back here.
(Applause).
Meganah, Zach.
Hi, nice to meet you. My name is Meganah Menon. I'm a ninth, or 10th grader, sorry, at South Forsyth High School and I've been competing in tech fair since the third grade.
One second. I'm Zach Els. I'm from Lambert High School and we've actually been competing together since the eighth grade and I started about the same time as her. Thank you. One, one second.
Well, he's doing that. I'm just kidding. As he said, we've been doing tech fair since the eighth grade, but this year, we decided to do something a little bit different than we normally do. We usually did mostly public service announcements and really short films, but this year, we decided to do something a little bit more personal.
And then what I'm about to show you is, is really where that personal thing comes in and I never knew my granddad and my dad never knew his father. And so from a really young age, when I was interested in film, my dad would always say, "If you don't have an amazing story, then you'll never have a good video." And so this year, we had an amazing story and so we wanted to make this video. So we traveled all the way to, all the way to St. Louis where he lives and we, we found him and this is preview of our movie. Thank you.
(Music) Right? He picked up the call. I think I called that one up on. I think it did too. Try again. I don't think he wants to see us.
Do you know, I was born in 1962. How many times have I seen him? So anyway, that's an update from St. Louis. Hey, did we do you? I don't know. I don't, I don't know. If we don't, we'll never know what happens. Maybe that's not necessarily a bad thing, you know?
All right, so I'm about ready to go knock on the door. I don't know what I'm doing, but you know, I need closure. I want to know what happened, so, all right.
Welcome the Boy Scouts that I saw come in. What troop?
254.
254. We're, we're glad you're here. We have, oh, you're a different troop.
We are 200.
200. Well, welcome to both of you. We're very glad you're here. It's always nice to see young, young adults coming in to see how the government works and what we're doing, so welcome. And at this time, we'll just take a couple minutes. If, if, if you want to stay for our meeting, we would love for you to, but if you would like to go, you're welcome to go now. We'll just take a couple minute recess. If we're ready, we'll resume our meeting. First, we have our consent agenda. I think we've all looked at it and read what's on it. Do I have a motion to approve?
Tom move.
A motion by Tom and a second by, who?
Ann.
Ann. I didn't pick up the voice. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, public participation, there is no public participation tonight. Next, we have the presentation and discussion item portion. First, we will have Mr. Dan Jones with the audit report.
Well, we've got for you tonight is a report on the 2013 audit report and I have Mr. Adam Fraley here. He's the partner in charge from Malden and Jenkins and he's going to go over the report with you and he can answer any questions that y'all might have about it.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Board members, for having me here this evening. I'm Adam Fraley with Malden and Jenkins. I'm with the external auditors for the school district and as Dan mentioned, I'm here this evening to present the audit results for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013 financial You should have the Board of Education's annual financial report in the gray covers there and I understand you also have them electronically and also electronically what we call our annual audit agenda. And the audit agenda speaks to the results of the audit and also has some of our required communications and, and so again, this show will kind of stick to this for the most part, which kind of summarizes things nicely. So I'm going to go through and if you have any questions, certainly stop me and I'll do my best to try to answer any questions you have. I'm going to start off on page two of the audit agenda. It just taught, it's kind of an update on, on our governmental practice within the firm. You know, it's growing each year. We have, we have, we have a specialty in serving governmental clients, including cities, Board of Educations, counties, and you can see there the breakdown of our clientele here in the southeast, mostly in the state of Georgia. Myself, I was the engagement partner on the audit engagement and we had an engagement director named James Benz who was out here and during the conduct of the field work for the audit and helped me to review those reports as well. Flipping to page three, just talks about some of the other industries that we serve and some of the other services that we provide. So a little more about Malden and Jenkins there. On page four, this talks about the responsibilities of these financial statements, the responsibilities of us as the external auditors, as well as the ultimate results of the audit. The financial statements are the responsibility of the school district. Management annually is required to put together an annual financial report that is audited and submitted to the state of Georgia. They did obviously prepare a financial report. We conducted our audit test work and our responsibility was to render an opinion on the financial statements based on our test work. We did render an opinion. It's often called a clean opinion, so that's good. In, in technical terms, they called an unmodified opinion, meaning it wasn't modified for any kind of exceptions or qualifications, if you will. It was a clean opinion, meaning that the financial statements, we believe based on our test work, are fairly presented in all material respects for, as of and for the year ended June 30th, 2013. We did this year, you'll see under the emphasis of matter, the school district, along with other governments nationally, local governments were required to adopt some new accounting principles this year. Those were adopted and you'll see some changes as you look at this year's financial report. A lot of it was in terminology, you know, things of the past where, you know, a lot of times we look at equity as kind of the, the reserve funds, if you will, of, of, of a government or a school district. And then the, the school district wide equity was called net assets, you know, your assets minus liabilities. It made sense. They want to change that on us and now they're going to call it net position. So you'll see things in there referred to as net position and that's the equity. That's, that's the net, the net assets informally now. So you'll see some change like that in, in the terminology and then just some accounting rule changes on how you account for certain transactions had to change in there. So just want to point that out to you. Going to page five, it starts talking about the financial statements a little bit. It concentrates on the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the school district and you'll see at the top of page six there, general fund revenues were about 273 million for the year June 30th, 13, compared to the prior year of about 261 million, showing about 11.4 million dollar increase. Total expenditures for the year ended June 30th, 13 were about 273.6 million compared to prior year of 263 point, well, roughly 264 million. So you'll see that expenditures increased, but there was a larger increase in the revenues to offset that. Flipping to page seven, this, this net position or the equity of the whole school district that I mentioned, you'll see in the middle of page seven there, the net position increased from about 356 million to 370, almost 77 million as of June 30th, 13. And then at the bottom of page seven and on through page eight and nine is, is the, is a Cliff Notes version of the financial statement footnote. So as you're looking at the financial report, you can see what each of one of those footnotes are telling the readers. On page 10, we did issue some other reports in accordance with, you know, federal requirements. The Office of Management Budget, anytime you have a certain amount of federal expenditures, you're required to have a single audit and so we did prepare, or I'm sorry, we did perform a single audit as well and you'll see at the top of page 10, we did issue those reports and we issued unmodified opinions related to that audit as well. Starting at the bottom of page 10 and it goes several pages, is our required communications and I'm not going to go into those in detail, any of them. Things that we would be required to cite in there is if we had any disagreements with management or if they weren't helpful in providing the information that we need and so forth, as well as, you know, any audit adjustments we had and so forth. We did have some audit adjustments and they were posted to the accounting records of the Board of Education and, and reflected in this financial report to make them fairly presented materially, in all material respects. As far as any disagree, we didn't have any disagreements with management. Finance Department was completely cooperative and, you know, getting us everything that we need, so we certainly appreciate that. Makes the audit go smooth. That's some of the highlights of the required communications. Starting on page 13, we, we did have a few findings. One related just to just some accounting transactions. Again, those were corrected and reflected in the financial report, so the necessary corrective action's been made there. And then a couple related to the single audits that, that weren't honestly of huge significance. They were relatively minor items, but, but the compliance requirements do require that we cite those items. And then we had a few other items called management points. These are items that, that are required by our standards to cite as any kind of finding or anything. They're, they're kind of other, I guess, byproducts of the audit where we may see a control could, an internal control could be strengthened here or there or made more effective or more efficient process. And so we, you know, we make, we'll make a comment like that and, and just as a, as another recommendation to management. And all of those have been gone over with those folks in the finance department. On page 16, this is the real fun reading, for those of you that, if the rest of it wasn't that fun enough. These are the new accounting standards that are coming out. So, you know, if you're, get a real wild hair and want to beef up on the accounting standards coming out, it's really just an FYI. You'll see some of them and, and you know, the GASB, which is the standard setting body, I mean, they're, they keep us on our toes. So there's a lot of them coming out and they're listed for several pages there, all the way through page 23, so. And that concludes my, my presentation. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
I was just amazed, I mean, all the, the small things that as large as we are, we don't have as many, for instance, the small things that you did mention, like there might not have been an invoice tied to a check or something like that, that we don't have that many, that the few that they found and I think that's a tribute to the work that's been done.
Absolutely.
With the finance department and getting out the work that, that's just an absolute, that's amazing in organization our size.
That's really good and if I may, you, you know, we, we work with 280 governments and relatively speaking, I mean, that, that's really good. I mean, you know, especially like you said, a school district of your size to, to have as clean of a financial picture, if you will, and, and accounting department and how they keep up with things, they do a really good job. So we certainly appreciate it. That makes the audit a little bit easier, but it gets you all financial information that you can rely on much more timely and so they do a good job.
They really do. I have one observation and I, it's nothing, it's just I couldn't figure out how Valerie ran the food service with $200,000 less in 2013. I mean, I was so impressed with that. I was, I had to sit somewhere, so I did go through this audit, believe it or not, and I just saw that, because everything else was a little bit more and it was because we're bigger and we have more expenses, but hers wasn't and I thought, goodness, that's impressive. Not impressive.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your hard work.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, now, Mr. Jones will have the finance report.
We're impressed, Mr. Jones, with your finances.
Thank you. Thank you. (Inaudible). Yep. Okay, what we have tonight is a financial report for the month ending January 2014. This is the seventh month of our fiscal year, so we're a little more than halfway through. We started the month with 93 million, almost $94 million in the bank. Our receipts for the month were 15.4 million. Expenses, accounts payable was 12.8 and payroll was 10.7 million. Total of 23,593,000, leaving us cash in the bank of 85,812,000. And comparing to last year, we are $53,000 better than we were this time last year with cash.
Wow. That's phenomenal.
Yeah, that's big money. Our budget report, our revenues, again, we're at the seventh month, so it'd be a little over 50 percent, so we're 73.7 percent on revenues and 58 percent on expense, which is right in line with where we need to be on expenditures. And you can see we've collected over 95 percent of our property taxes through January. That's pretty good.
That's pretty good.
And our real estate transfer tax, I like to point these out, we're 93 percent on real estate transfer, so we'll make that, probably exceed that. The intangibles, hopefully we'll see some coming in. We're only 50 percent, but I, I think we might, we'll be pretty close at the end of the year. And you can look at each function area and see that everybody's right in line with where they should be. And then we have the list of checks that were written for the month. This is a listing of every check that we wrote out of accounts payable for wire transfer. We can get any information you need on that. Schools, all the schools had a report this month. You can see elementary total was a little over 2 million, middle school totals, million two, and the high schools were 2.9 and combined, all the schools totaled, there were 6.3 million in the accounts at the school level. Sales tax, had a good month this time. This is for December, so it's Christmas time. This is only the second time that we've hit 3 million. The first one was December of last year. We didn't get quite as much, we're 400,000 more than last month, which is 15 percent, but you see we were down 2.2.
Down from last year.
From last year, at the same time period.
We're reflective of what happened to the economy. They said Christmas wasn't as good.
Right.
Plus it was a week less.
Plus with the weather.
Thanksgiving and Christmas, it was a week less of shopping, really.
Right. It was a shorter time period to shop, but again, we did get over 3 million, so I'm glad to see that.
Mm-hmm.
And this money is invested and we earned 1,644 dollars in interest and we did have to transfer some money, $7 million out to debt service to make bond payments. service to make bond payments. Again, just a picture of it, it's on the upswing, I hope it continues to climb, but probably not.
It'll be back down.
And we still have oh-seven bond money, we earned six hundred and fifty-five dollars in interest, and there's a total of seven point two million. And again, this money is what we're showing is obligated for the next elementary school. Same thing with the oh-five, it's two hundred and sixty-six dollars in interest, excuse me, there's two point nine million dollars there. And capital outlay, again, this reflects that all of our money in the capital outlay is obligated for the next elementary school. And debt service, you can see, here's the payments that we made, and there's currently twenty-five point four million total in sales tax and in the debt service account for future bond payments. And that's the report for the month. Any questions, I can answer.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and next, we're going to have a legislative update.
As I bring up legislative update, I also want to echo appreciation to Mr. Jones and his department for the outstanding work that they continue to do in our finances. You think about what we've been through in the last seven years with the economy, going from a high down to a low and then back to some moderation, and our school system being in the situation that it, that it's in, we've continued to build buildings, we've continued to provide learning opportunities for kids, and achievements continue to go up. And so I really do appreciate the, the leadership that Dan, Rick, and all the fine folks in finance have done. It's always exciting, good legislative updating, you know, it's been a long time since we had any good news, but we have a little bit, we're going to try to put a bright spin on everything that we possibly can, but we start with one that doesn't have much bright, and that is, what I've done this, this particular year in terms of giving you the legislative update, I've taken our priorities and tried to focus on, first of all, what's happening in regards to the priorities that you as a Board of Education set. Number one priority was performance and flexibility. To my knowledge, there is no action taking place on this bill to this particular point, and as we approach the crossover day, day thirty, we don't have a lot of time for that to happen, I just say, I don't know of anything that's going to make that happen.
So there's nothing we can do? That's my question, is there anything we can do?
There's been, there's been a lot of talk, there've been a lot of meetings, there've been a lot of begging, it just seems to be, there's support on one side, not on the other side, and nothing to, to break the logjam. So, you know, hopefully we'll continue to work on this. The second priority is funding, and this is where there's a bright spot. I do want to say, you know, the fact that, you know, I facetiously said this, I don't care whether it's an election year or not, if you can find a way to put money back in education, we take it, and we say thank you, and that's what exactly we're doing. The way it was given to us, Dan's already shared a little bit of information with this previously, roughly the, the increased revenue above our growth revenue should be somewhere in the tune of about seven million dollars, and we were, we will be hopefully getting that once we see that allotment sheet, but we will receive that and have an opportunity to make some decisions and recommendations to you about how we deal with that. Technology support, I've got a page that goes beyond this to talk us a little bit about this. You know, we did also have a priority about exceptional growth funding for capital outlay. You know, I do want to keep that on the radar, whether or not it gets any attention this year or not, keep that there. Technology infrastructure was the third priority, that is within the funding, so in other words, we got two out of three, and that, that's not too bad. Within the budget, this is probably for those who aren't up, up close, have an ability to see this very well, but you see the three hundred and fourteen million to reduce austerity, that's about roughly twenty-five percent of the austerity reductions that we've had. Other notable enhancements within this, you do see ten million dollars put in there for test redevelopment, for the CRCTs and then the course test. We also see that they've, you see things such as a million dollars for differentiated pay. So I think over in the coming years, you'll see more of that. Also point out money for school nurses in addition to one point three million. It's not a really a lot, but it's a little bit when you start applying it to all just, all nurses across the state. Few other things that I think would be interesting for us to point out, you see bonds for buses, that's money that we didn't know necessarily would be there. Also, you see the fourteen million dollars last one, fourteen million dollars in bonds for technology infrastructure upgrades. And if you think about it, what, what they didn't put in last year that they had wanted to put in was only about four point seven. So putting in fourteen million dollars now is nearly, is over three times more than what they didn't put in last year, but they intended to put in. So that's good news, and we'll, we'll look forward to seeing what it looks like on an allotment sheet, look forward to see what it translates into for revenues for Forsyth County. Now, I won't spend an awful lot of time going over all of these, but I think these, there are a number of bills of interest that are in the process. They don't seem to be in a great big hurry to get any of these necessarily passed, which kind of makes it interesting. But some that I find somewhat interesting here, House Resolution eleven eighty-six is basically a resolution urging courses in financial literacy graduation requirement, so maybe a good idea. I don't know how you necessarily legislate and implement that, but that's interesting. Senate Bill three forty-three gets the Senate involved with sending a message, I think, that's my opinion, to GHSA, and they're basically requesting more diversity, but yet also some, maybe a little bit of control over GHSA. That'll be interesting to see what that happens. That's a non-governmental.
I know, it's a non-governmental entity, and I can do that.
And sometimes these things are done to send messages, perhaps that is one of those. I will, will not speculate more on that. Senate Bill three nineteen would raise the dropout age to seventeen point five. Just in case you're not aware, allegedly thirty-two states have raised the dropout rate, so you may see that be a trend. I don't know that that will happen this year, but it's out there for debate. Getting on down to some of those that we've been having some conversation about, House Bill eight ninety-seven, starting out as an amending, the Title Twenty for three consecutive years now. Representative Dungeon has carried the bill that would do Title Twenty cleanup. This one gets a little bit deeper in that, as you know what happens, sometimes they like to tack things on to bills as they go through the legislative process, and that appears to be taking place in this one. Just got to point out, House Bill eight sixty-one, and that's what I call the Merry Christmas Bill, and that basically says it's okay to say Merry Christmas in school, you know.
Who knew we'd need a bill?
So whatever, or whatever, and it points out what you can say, and it, and it tries to cover all those things from, from Christmas to other holidays that might be recognized as well.
You know, I thought they were trying to get rid of stuff like this, I mean, but, I mean, you couldn't legislate that, really. But they, even the first one about posting school district charter budgets, we have, that's public knowledge anyway, why, why does, I don't, I don't get that one either.
One that I know that you, that I sent you earlier today, is the Senate Bill one sixty-seven, not sure that that's actually going to be the number, it went to committee day, and it does everything but mention the words Common Core, as best that I read through the eighteen or nineteen pages of it, but it, it does a lot of things, from specifying what you'll do in, in selecting curriculum and what you shouldn't select in curriculum, and establishes some do's and some don'ts, and some committees and some subcommittees that will review the content. It addresses testing, it addresses which, which would be, if you want to align it to the Common Core conversation, would obviously be park and smarter balance, and then it talks about data collection, which addresses the issues of the in balloon data sharing. So that bill is probably, is going to sail right on along through there, so those are some bills of, of interest. Let me pause there, because I know some of you may have a comment or question about one or more of those.
I'd just like to make a point on that last one. It was interesting at the LSC meeting this morning that they were talking about the, the PISA comparative grades across the world, about where the United States stands, and it's something that we looked at several years ago, about trying to improve math instruction in English, and how poor America showed up against other countries. But one of the recommendations they made, and they felt like that going to Common Core curriculum would improve instruction in the American schools, so I, I think that's a point to be made, considering there's so much criticism of it.
I was reading, I was talking to Representative Dungeon about this, because obviously he's been working hard at this one, and some of the things that he thought were challenging were, were actually, in our discussion, I pointed out, they're talking about the new test, and there's ten million dollars in the budget to make the new test, but one of the points in it was that there, no two, no new test would be done until the reviews of Common Core were done, which makes sense. In the same token, how do you make a test when you don't know what standards you're designing a test for? So I thought that was, I mean, we're, we're running close to needing that in another year, so with CRCTs going away, I'm glad that they want to have the right standards, but someone's got to make that test. So I thought that was going to be a string challenge. He did specifically say that they're supportive in that it did talk about, you know, federal control, they're not involved, it talked about the higher standards, what they thought that was good. He was very happy about, you know, the data protection and, you know, keeping our privacy, which I know I'm a huge advocate of. It also was good about respecting the teachers in that not switching curriculum on them to, not curriculum, excuse me, standards, you know, sudden changes and realizing the teachers need to have some, some say in this, and I thought that was good. Just trying to see if there's anything else he said. He talked about that fifteen-person panel that the Senate would be, the Senate would make of the governor, the governor, lieutenant governor, and speaker, the panel would be largely parents.
Agglon parents.
Yeah, which is, so I was open hearings, so I was, overall, I think they said they had some details to work out, but it was interesting. I had a question for you on two. One, whatever happened, not that we were excited about the idea, but with House Bill five eighteen, with the election of superintendents, whatever happened with that?
I've not heard any movement along that. Again, sometimes there's legislation that is dropped and are talked about and proposed that, the just question is, is there any interest in having conversation about that? It could still happen, but to my knowledge, there's been no movement.
And the other, on the, the ESPOLOST, the ability to use, you know, fifty percent of the capital, and it was talking about from, I think it was January of two thousand and fifteen on, I just wondered, I mean, looking at the figures in our finances, pretty much our ESPOLOST, it's set aside for debt payments and for the foreseeable forever future, if we have, you know, successful in a future ESPOLOST, again, from my understanding, would be always for paying down debt. So I don't know if it would necessarily apply to us, but I was trying to figure out if you were midstream in a ESPOLOST, reading through the document, I just couldn't figure out how you could change that, if you could say, hey, wait a minute, we
Well, it would only apply to future ESPOLOST, because when you identify ESPOLOST, you identify what those funds are going to go for in that project in advance, so it would have to be for future ESPOLOST. And as you know, a hundred percent of our ESPOLOST currently goes for paying debt service and our buildings, paying for buildings, so it may not be as much of an attractive option for us, but there are some districts that have a high, a very positive amount of their income comes from sales tax, and they don't have enough opportunity to really spend it all. Dawson County's a great example, as we feed the fire with Georgia four hundred outlet mall, but, so they would perhaps benefit from it. So it's going to be interesting, there have been mixed opinions about that one over the years as it's been kicked around previously, but, you know, frankly, it's, it's left to local decision, and local school boards have that option, and it's best for that community, and the citizens of that community vote for that, it may be a way for there to be a better distribution of how revenues are generated to support educational programming.
Because you, you have to lower the property taxes, right, if you, if you use that, so there's, and there's, obviously there's a formula that would have to be figured out and everything, but yeah, for certain communities, it would be excellent.
I'm kind of glad that we don't, won't be getting into it, because there were, Mike said one of the problems he saw with it was that there was a stipulation that ACCG that, if the Board of Ed wanted to use it for something, a project that would affect transportation issues, they would have to go to their county commission to get approval for that. I just thought that would be a challenge for some areas, and was glad that, probably wouldn't be an issue for us since we're just paying down our debt, so. So Mr. Dungeon was not, he was not thrilled with that as well, so that might not end up in the final version, but we'll see.
Okay, we look forward to maybe next month, giving you a, a update on what really has transpired, or is closing to transpires, perhaps they haven't, they probably won't be finished with the session by the time that we meet next time, but they should be reasonably close.
And I would like to say thanks for putting the links in there for the community, if they want to go look at that presentation, the links in there are live, and they'll take you actually to the bills. And Georgia School Board Association, which we're a part of, actually puts that information out there, so you know where in the process those bills are and the real detail, and if you really want to read something, read the wording of the bills and what they're saying in it. So thanks for doing that extra bit of work.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have Dr. Valerie Hall with the GSBA Quality Board Recognition Discussion.
This is a conversation that we started last fall, we continued it at the board retreat. We were determining whether or not we would proceed with going for Level Two and Level Three with Georgia School Boards Association Achievement Recognition Levels. You all were aware of, in December, we were awarded Quality Board by Georgia School Board Association, we met that criteria, and then, so we've been discussing Level Two, which we would have to meet during this current fiscal year, and then we would apply for that in the fall to be recognized again this December. So just wanted to continue that conversation with you. I know Mrs. Crowe had some conversation with GSBA about some concerns we had with training requirements and where those requirements came from, as well as some of the requirements for the assessment portion. So Ms. Crowe, do you want to update us on that?
Yes, I did speak with the director, Mrs. Henry, because in an earlier conversation, we had, when we had this conversation in our retreat, we understood that the only training that we could use was that that had been approved by the State Board of Education. Most of that we have already had, so for us to have to duplicate training isn't really what a distinguished board should be about. So I explained to her that we were doing things like diversity training, and that we did book studies, and we did all this other, that would better prepare us to be a better board, and she agreed, and it will be discussing, discussed at the board retreat in March. And the proposal would be to possibly present whatever, for instance, with our diversity training, say this is what we want to use as our three extra hours of credit to board members, and present that and let it be approved by GSBA rather than tying it directly to what is approved by the State Board. I think it's limiting school boards from stretching and doing things other than the same old, same old stuff that we, we always do. So hopefully we'll have an answer in March, if we can go proceed. Do we have to do anything before that March meeting?
We have until the end of June.
Okay, so we're okay with that.
And, and really, we have to have three people that have to have extra
Three additional training hours, based on the state training requirement list.
Okay.
Which we could do that online, we could do that in a number of different ways, but it would have to be something on the state-approved list.
Unless Ann comes back with another answer.
We're always asking for that flexibility, so hopefully they'll, they'll take that.
Is there anything else besides the training?
The only other thing was the assessment, when you all do your self-assessment, there's an internal committee that we would need to, need to form to be able to go through that, which I don't see that being a big deal. Next year, when we go to exemplary board, there's, there's an external committee that we would use for that, but we can, should be able to meet all the other requirements of this criteria, depending on whether or not we see that the training requirements are going to be wavered a little bit.
Years ago, that was actually a requirement, when you had got one of these levels, we had that.
So we've done it before.
Yes, exactly. Community members are so supportive, I don't see any problem with having an external review.
Everything else will be fine, so we will continue as if we're going to submit that in the fall for distinguished board, and you can update us and let us know what we need to do from there.
Okay.
You'd think we could use a SACS review, right?
Right.
As our external review.
Exactly. But it's probably just more just of the board and superintendent self-assessment, more of us.
There's a section in there.
There is.
I mean, I would like to do it if it's beneficial to us and can help us, but if it's not beneficial, then there's other things we can do that can help us just to not get the piece of paper, is my opinion.
Right. Yeah, I'd like to go along our trail of the diversity training and whatever we feel we need to do as a board, and if it happens to fit in, fine, if it doesn't, I don't, I don't, I'm not set on becoming a distinguished board just to have that title.
Bureaucracy, right.
So we'll wait to hear back.
Right. Hopefully we'll get the flexibility.
Okay, and next, then we have the agenda item that we added, the makeup days. Dr. Evans is going to lead that discussion.
Yes, I gave you something earlier, but if you will, replace it with that particular document, because we had to modify a couple of things. You know, it never fails that immediately after, after we get back from an inclement weather day, or a day that we've had to take out because of inclement weather, the question quickly becomes, how or a day that we've had to take out because of inclement weather, the question quickly becomes, how are you going to make up those days? That happened early in the year when we first missed the first couple of days because of the bitter cold. And we knew that we had a couple of days built into our calendar for inclement weather days, but that was awfully early in the winter. And as we've been reminded many, many times, the Farmer's Almanac had predicted a very cold winter this year. And there are even people reminding me, it's got something in store for us next week. That we're just not going to, we're not going to worry about next week until next week.
I didn't hear the snow was on the ground more than three days.
When the snow's on the ground more than three days, you're going to have another one. And both of our snows have been on the ground more than three days.
Well, I think the lesson is that we don't do the calendar until we check the Farmer's Almanac.
But certainly, the, the thing to remember is we're not in control of the weather, but we do have a response to be proactive. And I appreciate all those people who have been a part of helping make those decisions to call schools when we have called it. And we, we've done that and now we're going to look at, first of all, how we make up those instructional days. And I think that's very important. I've heard from a number of parents who said that they're very interested in it. Think it's important that we make up instructional time. And that's one thing I want to use the word time as opposed to necessarily days. Of course, we've also heard from a number of, from parents who say, but we don't want to lose our spring break. I met with, Dr. Norton and I met with a group of students yesterday afternoon. And of course, one of them's a graduating senior and he said, please don't put it on, you know, talk about, don't move graduation. And, um, and then I said, how would y'all like to come to school on Saturday? And you can imagine that that didn't work. So we actually are, are trying to think a little differently. And here's a couple of things that we want to point out and tell you what we're working on. Not to tell you that we've reached a final conclusive decision as far as the days are concerned at this point. But we do want to point out to begin with is, I pulled together and had conversation with several of our cabinet level people in the district. And I, Mr. Perkel is here, so Mr. Perkel, you may need to step up and help me in a second. But if you, especially if I stray off the, um, the correct information. But if you, we've got a little chart here. The State Department of Education requires a certain number of minutes for a school day. So you could, in Forsyth County, you could go in grades K through three, 270 minutes. Grades four, five, 300 minutes and grades six through 12, 330 minutes. But if you look at our school calendar, our, our school day, even our element kindergarten and through third grade students go to school 30 more minutes a day than is required for high school students. So we are building in above the required number of minutes because, for a couple of reasons. But we do believe that learning time is important and we've built that into our learning day each day.
About an hour for each.
Yeah, actually nearly an hour. So given, given each week of the school year, we're doing literally the equivalent of a school day more than what is required by State Board rule. Also, we, we've taken that into consideration. But we also recognize we've got a couple of opportunities. We are going to be making a request to modify the calendar, of which we'll, I have to make that request to you at a later time. But to make up the, or we'll, first of all, the inclement weather days, we won't. Those are in the calendar. So we will take our two inclement weather days that we've already got built into the calendar. We had a early release day scheduled for, um.
Friday, March 14th.
Friday, March the 14th. But we're not going to do an early release day that day. What we're going to do is just go to school all day. And that way we'll just get a little bit of instructional time back and give, but to give the encouragement for those parent conferences that need to be made to be handled by the school as necessary beyond the school day. So once again, it'll be an opportunity for those parents who our teachers need to meet with. They can schedule that timing as necessary. Also, the, the group has had conversation and Ms. Kiefer and Mr. Mercer, along with Dr. Solon and Ms. Harrison, have worked to come up with some, a solution for pushing our CRCT. And those are the only ones that we have the flexibility on, but to move our CRCT testing five days later in the year. So in other words, we will, we will push that testing back five days. And that way we will get five extra instructional days as they relate to that particular.
So this says back, but it really means forward, I would think. Later.
Well, late, we're going to fix that. We're going to use the word later.
Later, okay. I, I'm really excited about that because that's one of the biggest questions the parents are worried about. I'm really pleased that y'all.
It was scheduled right after spring break, right?
That's great.
Three days, so it will be like a whole week after.
This is something people wanted regardless of inclement weather.
And I agree. I think that's a good move. Dr. Solon?
Just to add to the intervention for you, assuming we do all that you just said, we would move CRCT testing first day would be the 16th of April. So that is that five days back. We have reading in ELA, 16 to 17. The 18th would be a makeup because the next, you have to do the CRCT in the order the state tells you. So you have to do reading, ELA, math, science and social studies. So we're doing a makeup day on Friday because our principals want those kids to be.
For come to the microphone.
So they'll, we'll have math.
Cindy, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can you come to the microphone? Because this, it, it won't get recorded and so people listening at home probably really need to hear this. It's important. They really would, especially about the testing. The day it starts instead. Right, we'll start, we'll start with that. Say that upfront. This is tentative, but this is our, hoping to plan this.
So if we do the calendar, as you've just discussed, as best we can tell right now, what we would be doing is beginning CRCT with reading on the 16th of April, having two days of testing that week, Wednesday and Thursday. We would not test on Friday, but rather use it as a makeup for CRCT. Now, I'm not talking CRCTM, just CRCT. Then we would have math on Monday, the 21st, science and then social studies. We'd have that, so two days of testing, 16, 17, three days of testing, 21, 22, 23, makeups in between. And finish our makeups on, because we have to have so many days of makeups, have to have a, a nine-day window total. So we'd have 28 and 29, 28 makeups. And then we would start getting CRCTs back to the rack, um, rack to ship. And hopefully we would ship those down on the 30th. Now, again, that's all, we're, we're working on it. That's changed four times today, but that was about 5:00 today. So.
That's good news.
That is going out this tomorrow on Friday notes. And then we're having our administrative meeting tomorrow. And so principals will have, and schools and test coordinators will have time to look at this tonight. So that we hope we'll have it pretty finalized as soon as possible. Is that good?
That's great, but don't go anywhere since you're already up here until I finish this. All right. So what we will also do is these calendar revisions will be posted. Also, in addition to the post, post-planning days of May 27th and 28th, we are looking at adding May 29th and 30th to be post-planning days for our teachers. Now, I, I say that in saying that we, we're going to get some days in beyond the year. There are some needs that, that we may have by differing grade levels. That may, for example, we've got those who are involved in, in not only different grade levels, but different content areas. But, but every teacher that, that we know can use some additional planning time. We've got the need to develop what's called the student learning objectives that are going to be part of future evaluation. So it may very well be that we also capture some learning time rather than paying people for days that they come back, use certain amount of days that, that we would otherwise, otherwise would have to be paying people. Did I say that right?
You're doing well.
So we're trying to give us a little flexibility so that we also use the best judgment that we have rather than paying people for days of coming back, using days that they would otherwise not have been here. The last element that we are, that is in development and we have a committee. Well.
There's going to be some, there'll be some more workdays.
There'll be some workdays added at the end, okay? Right now, they look like they'll be the 28th and the 9th. But if Cindy can't show up on the 29th, we'll let her come June the 3rd. Fourth and 5th too.
Examples help.
All right. The, the final element of this is, and some of you have already seen this and we've shared some communication. So many of our teachers were, were posting lessons, student work on the IT'S Learning Platform during spring break. They spent time planning it. We had students working on it. I know that during one period of time that we checked, we had over 7,000, I think 7,600 or something students who actually had been online during IT'S Learning during part of those snow days. And that was really without any real concentrated work. So we have a team with, uh, uh, Dr. Bray and our curriculum folks and others looking at what we can do. We're wanting to capture the idea of, and exercise the idea of using some virtual learning time. So that, and virtual instruction time, so that we help our students get used to learning how to do this. Have we got it all figured out? No. But we do think that we can make up some learning time. We're having discussions right now about, well, what could we do? Well, we may could do a CRCT test prep. Are some particular group, we talked about with our, our cabinet members. What are our system priorities of literacy, mathematics, language arts, or writing? And so what we're, can end up doing is actually may find ways to, to build in student learning opportunities that are focused on what our district level initiatives are. And I think it's a great way for us to leverage your technology and get us to telelearning, just like many moms and dads in our district every now and then, telework. And learn, and, and demonstrate that learning can go on beyond the school day, beyond the school year. And in doing so, they have access to content. So we're looking at a way of doing that. And of course, that will require some online development time for teachers. And it will require some online develop, uh, work time for our students. And, um, you know, it's, it's good to be able to try things new and if it works, great. If it doesn't work, well, I, I think, I don't think it's a, it's a lose left in this anywhere whatsoever. It's an opportunity for us to get better.
The parents that were at that LSA meeting were talking about the fact that, that this, it was good for them to have that structure for the kids, to be able to say, all right, you, you go out to play after you've done an hour on the IT'S Learning and getting your work done. So they felt it was extremely positive to be able to have that input, to have the, the connection with IT'S Learning with, for their students. Very positive.
Everybody we've talked to has been very excited about the idea. And we know we have things to work out and we'll work on it. I mean, it's not going to be perfect, your first try, but still, we think it's a, a great thing to start working on.
I think it also got parents that maybe weren't using it before as much, getting into it. And that to me is a great positive out of this. They're getting in and checking things now and that's wonderful, so.
And make it something that's normal. It's not something we just pull out during snow days or when we really, really need it, make it normal. You know, a lot of people take Friday and telework on Friday or another day that's convenient for them when they have other things to go on. So the opportunity to work is no different. It's just I log in different. And I, I did the same thing. I worked the whole time. In fact, I probably worked more, sitting at home inside the ice, not being able to go and do anything. So I ended up working.
It's the way of the future, especially at the high school level, they say. This is what they will be doing, high school kids especially.
Well, that's one of the things the high school people told us. It was, you know, it, it was so rampant, I guess you'd say, or common during that time. Because they weren't thinking about doing it literally, but it happened so often that when we brought it all up, they're like, well, we did that. So it, you're right, it's common.
I have a question about the calendar. Given the last few years, three years ago, we had that whole week of ice. And then we've had a couple of, you know, years lately this year. Are we going to revisit the 2014, 15 calendar and potentially add in, we have two inclement weather days?
I'll swap places with you.
I'll tell you, I've been on the board long enough. We've had this discussion over and again.
Last year, we didn't have any, did we?
That's right.
I think we had two.
We didn't use them though.
We didn't use them. We used to have four, but maybe we put in IT'S Learning days instead of, you know, it's not.
Yeah, we've done, I mean, we've done different things in, in years. I mean, you know, we, we had several, we've had four, we've had three. And then, you know, we go several years, we don't use those. And then we have parents with their feedback, say, that's a waste, take them out, do we take them out? And then we have seven days of snow and they say, why don't we have them? So, you know, maybe I do need to start looking at the Farmer's Almanac.
And get maybe some of these guys that do the technology projects to do it on weather and the cycles of weather, so we know when.
I mean, we can go back and, and look at it and talk about it. We're, I mean, obviously from what Dr. Evans just talked, talked to you about, we'll need to go back and look at what we have now and make, you know, some adjustments based on what he said. But we can, um, we can go back and look at it, but.
And also based on how well the, um, this works, the.
Right, the IT'S Learning.
Telelearning and all that, you know, it may not be necessary.
Right, exactly.
If everybody feels like they got valuable time, that's the answer then.
That's true.
Right. And I think it might, I think it's, and I think that's probably going to be something important to really consider. It's just, I guess, in my opinion, it's just kind of, I think it'd be probably beneficial for us to really kind of see how this works. Because I would really want us to go back and, and make some changes when really, um, we didn't really have to.
Well, I think the one thing, parents, I know when we did the calendar last year, I was surprised how smooth it went. And that we did add, we went from 177 to 180 days. We restored the furlough days and went back up to 180 days in anticipation of a better budget from the state, which is fortunately working out. So we have increased three days. And really, there was no pushback. No, people didn't say, hey, you can take, we still have a full week off of Thanksgiving. We still have a very long Christmas break. We still have a full week at spring break. So we were able to put those three days in without really changing much. So we've already increased our year.
And, and plus too, taking note that we are, um, really 7.5 hours more a week for K-3. And as I think you said, it's, so it really averages out to about five, about five hours. And it is exactly five hours for four and five and 4.58 hours for six through 12. Additional hours that we go. And I'm sure that, that you all probably remember that happened several years ago when we, um, as a system initiated those early release professional learning days. We actually, that's when we extended and added time onto our instructional time onto our calendar to try to make up for some of that too. So we all, we just always kept that.
So they had the same amount of minutes.
Which is a good thing. It's not, I mean, that's great.
With all the demands at the elementary school level and then trying to get into special things like music and arts and, and, uh, physical education, that's time well spent. There's no way they could do it with an hour less in time and make an impact.
I have a question about this year's calendar, this March 14th, that's going to be changed from early release. Did you mention we have to vote on that? Because our next meeting is not till March 13th. So does that have to be done tonight? If that's an official, if that is going to happen, we are going to officially change that calendar?
Well, but it's a school day. It's just going from.
But it was only going to be half day.
It's a change of schedule.
They only would be there half day. Now they're going to be there all day, right?
But we don't vote on when we, like when we let them out early the other day because of the weather.
I'm just asking, because he mentioned voting on this.
We, you will at some point. We could do it. I, I don't know that there's a specific requirement that it be done by that. Because there, the, what happens is, we will, the purpose for modifying that is so that we can set a revised calendar to the Georgia Department of Education. Or we could do it the 13th if we, if we do that. And that's.
Parents will be notified.
I don't, I really don't think it's necessary that you, you officially vote on it just for us to extend the day. We would have to send the revision, as Dr. Evans said, to the State Department. And I mean, I, I mean, I always take care of, of that anyway, so. I really don't think that would be a huge issue. Considering the circumstance that we're in.
Yeah, I just was wondering.
You know, making a change, you know, kind of haphazardly or whatever, we would probably want to do that. But I think under this situation, we're fine.
Okay. Anything else? We're good. Okay, next, we have any future agenda items that we? Anybody needs adding? Okay. So we'll move on to action items. And the first is request to name portion of facility at Riverwatch and Jennifer Cratchelo.
Good evening. As you know, according to board policy, the board has the final decision on any facility or part of a facility. And so tonight I bring forward to you from Riverwatch Middle School, um, a request. And they've written up a proposal and it meets our guidelines for our procedure, which is, name proposals should be based on the following criteria. A historic or significant, significant reference to the geography of the area where the school is located, to honor a distinguished deceased individual, deceased individual, or, um, to also look at the background of the school. And so what you have before you is a proposal. And this is to request that the Riverwatch Middle School Court be named Mike Brown's Court. And Mike Brown was a teacher at Riverwatch Middle School and he passed away on May 29th, 2013 as a result of a courageous. 2013, as a result of a courageous three-year battle with cancer. And Mr. Brown actually started out as a consultant doing professional development with South Forsyth Middle School, where they brought him as a substitute teacher, and then he became a parapro, and then he became a full-time teacher. And then he left South Forsyth Middle School to open up Riverwatch Middle School, where he served as athletic director, and eighth-grade basketball coach, and also golf coach. So at this time, I would like to ask the superintendent to please recommend to rename Riverwatch Middle School's Court, Mike Brown's Court.
It is recommended that the Forsyth County Board of Education approve the naming of Mike Brown Court at Riverwatch Middle School.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Nancy, and a second by Kristen. Any discussion?
No. The reading through that was very heartfelt, yeah. It was nice.
I, I have to tell a story. I coached against him when I coached middle school basketball. And he, and he, he and I had a great rivalry. He coached at South at the time, and he always called me the wicked witch of the north. And it was, it was a huge joke. He was, he was a good guy. We had a great, healthy rivalry, so.
What Kathy was talking about, the influence he had on kids and how they wanted to make sure that, that they did something that he approved of. So he was well-respected by all the students. They still talk about him.
That's great. So, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and next, we have Mr. Jones with the referendum resolution to call an election for the issuance of general obligation bonds.
Correct. Okay, what we've got tonight is this resolution, but let me give you a little background on how we got here. Take just a few minutes. I've been working with Mr. Holcomb, with Citigroup, running numbers and looking at things, and how we're going to structure this, this issue, and we've got to have this information to put it in this resolution here. They sent me a bunch of numbers. We, this was during some of the snow days, we were on the phone a lot, asking them to rerun and look at things in a different way. And originally, we were thinking that we would go what they were calling a wrap, where we were wrapping a lot of capitalized interest and things in to try to save some money up front, and it was backloading the payments on this. And when I got those numbers and started looking at them, Mr. Holcomb suggested that we look at a level debt service schedule, thinking that that would save us some interest money. We looked at those numbers, and it did save us a good bit of interest money. So they sent me those numbers, we looked at them, and what they were doing was assuming that the digest, this would be the bond debt service digest, would grow 2% for the next five years, well, 14 through 18. They assumed 1% after the next five years, and then zero after that, which, you know, when you're projecting these things out, you try to be conservative, because you don't want to go too high and not make it. And also, we're going on the premise that we would renew SPOS for the term of this bond, keep renewing it, and in order to do that, I told him I wanted to be conservative on that. So we looked at a half a percent growth for 10 years, and then no growth after that. And this was originally scheduled to be a 20-year bond payment. So when we started looking at that, they were actually dropping off the debt service milled rate. And I said, we don't want to do that. We want to keep that because we want to keep those funds in case sales tax doesn't come in. So I said, rerun this, and let's keep the debt service milled rate consistent throughout the life of this bond. Well, they ran those numbers and got back to me, and we were generating some excess money there, and I said, let's look at this one more way. We've got to have this money. Let's look at knocking some years off the amortization schedule, and we're saving interest every year that we knock off. So they ran some more numbers for me. We got back on the phone and started talking, and we're now suggesting, and what is in here is an 18-year amortization schedule. And by doing that, we're saving about $13 million in interest that we're going to have to pay. So we know, we worked diligently on this, looking at a lot of different scenarios. This is a level payment, so that, what that means is that the payments each year are basically the same, there'll be a little bit of fluctuation, but they're basically the same throughout the life of this bond.
That's different.
And something else that we're probably going to do in this, in this resolution, we will not issue $195 million all at one time. We can't do those projects.
Right.
We just don't have enough time to do $195 million worth of projects. So the scenario we're using is we would go with $100 billion first for the first couple of years. Get those projects going, get them out of the ground, get them started, and then when we get ready to do the next series, we'll do $95 million. So that's the way we're looking at it right now, that's with this resolution. It also gives us the flexibility in the resolution, if we don't need $100 million or $95, we can delay that even more. And what that does, it saves us interest. If you're not paying back that at those rates, then we're saving interest money. So that is in this resolution. Another thing that we have to do is establish what our maximum interest rate that we'll pay. And again, this is just a guess, but we, we set that at 6.95%. We would not go above that. So hopefully, the way things are, if this bond issue is successful, we'll be a lot less than that. But at, at some point, if the market goes away from us where we have to pay more, then we'll just delay issuing these bonds, because we have to put a cap on it, that's all, that's what it says. So right now, that's where we are. We're, I think we've got a, a good amortization schedule, it's going to save us some money in interest. And what this did allow us to do was reduce our capitalized interest. This is interest that we would take the proceeds and pay for the interest up front, so that you're reducing your first part of your payments until the sales tax can be renewed. We were able to reduce that, and that gave us about $7 million more dollars to put into the construction fund.
Wow.
So we've looked at that. You know, we played with these numbers a good bit, and I think we've got something that we can live with, and it is going to be successful. So I would like to recommend to the superintendent that he, recommend to the board that we approve the referendum resolution calling for the election on May 20th of 2014 of $195 million in general obligation bonds at a maximum interest rate of 6.95%.
It is recommended that the Forsyth County Board of Education approve the resolution to call for an election for the issuance of general obligation bonds at a referendum to be held on May 20th, 2014, for the purpose of issuing $195 million worth of bonds at a maximum interest rate of 6.5%.
Excuse me, 6.95?
6.95%.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Ann and a second by Nancy. Any discussion?
I just want to thank you, Dan, for doing all your due diligence. It looks like you've really put some time into this.
That's what we're trying to do.
Exactly, thank you.
Now, do these have a callable option on them, or?
Yes.
Okay, and that's pretty normal. I don't know that we'd ever need it with the interest.
We have used that.
I know we have in the past with higher ones.
But I think it needs to be pointed out too, that we've got three of these things that are going to be paid off within the next two or three years. So this will be the biggest, the major one that we have left to pay off. So we're, we're keeping our milled rate down and doing, I love this level payment, that makes a lot more sense to me, so we don't have any surprises on down the road. But I think there's been some misinformation out there with some questions insinuating that this would cause an increase in milled rate or whatever, but we're not doing that. This will be the level, we'll be doing it with the dollars that we get from SPOS and from the current milled rate we have for the bond referendum, so.
Right, as long as the SPOS continues to be renewed.
That's a big caveat, in a few years.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, points of information, Dr. Evans?
Yes, two items to point out to you. First of all, you have 2014-15 graduation dates. That's a year and about four months from now, so that's not the ones coming up. But if you'd like to go ahead and put them in on your calendar for that year, you have those dates and those locations that have been established, as indicated on that sheet. Also, you have a little information regarding the local facilities' plan progress. That was, has been something that we've tried to keep you updated on throughout this process, as it is an important overlay and companion to the whole conversation of the issuance of our general obligation bonds. So that information is in there as well, and that's really all I had to share.
Would you explain to me on the dates for the graduation that was the one on the I.A. chief and stuff, which used to be combined with Forsyth Academy, and now those students will graduate with the regular high schools? So it's still going to be separate for the I.A. chief kids as well? How does it, why is it, there's a separate graduation for them in December?
That would be the case as it relates to that date there, December 18th, 2014? Yes.
Just I.A. chief is what it is?
Well, that would be anybody that would be within the umbrella of academies of creative education who are not going to be graduating from their home school, and it conceivably could even be a mid-year graduation of someone at a traditional school who elected to go ahead and graduate early.
Got it, so it's just an option.
It's an early graduation.